Be with the mayor and the board tonight. Just pray that we make decisions wise with your counsel, Lord. Thank you for each and every person here and the families represented tonight. Thank you for our police and fire and all of our city departments that go out of their harm's way to help us each and every day, Lord. We thank you for this time of season and, Lord, going into the Christmas season especially in your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, everyone. We appreciate everyone being here. Our first order of business is to approve the official agenda with consented items. Do I have any changes to the agenda or the consented items? Alden Carver?
No, ma'am.
Alden Rupp?
No, ma'am.
Alden Brooks?
No, ma'am.
Alden Bates?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Alden Siskel?
Yes, Mayor. Under Board Business Item 10A, request approval to appoint Stevens Incorporated as financial advisor for various bond issuances. And if it's acceptable to the board, I'd like to put that on consent.
Okay. Any objections to... This was a part of the committee?
Yes.
That made this assessment and Stevens, Inc., was the one they landed on? So, any concerns about putting it on consent?
And what I wanted to say was, there was much more interest in this position than I expected. We actually had four groups. I didn't know there were four groups that did business in the state. So, I was very, very pleased to see the level of interest that we had and from very professional groups. It was... There were two that rose to the top because they've done business with us before. And so, it was a difficult decision, but we hope we've made a good decision and that we will move forward with a lot of the bonds that we have coming up.
Any objections to putting that one on consent? Any objection? Seeing none, we'll put Item 10A on consent. Vice Mayor?
No, ma'am, ma'am. Thank you.
Alden Vaughn?
No, ma'am, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. Without any further objections or changes, I need a motion for the official agenda with the consented items as amended.
So, move.
Motion from Alden Rupp. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alden Carver. All those in favor could signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I will read the consented agenda items. First is consideration of the minutes of the September 20th, 2022 meeting of the mayor and board of aldermen of the city of Starkville. Consideration of the minutes of the September 29th, 2022 special call meeting of the mayor and board of aldermen of the city of Starkville. Consideration of the minutes of the September 30th, 2022 work session of the mayor and board of aldermen of the city of Starkville. We have... I forgot to do this, y'all. I'm sorry. We'll get to it. I need to delete Item A under Mayor's Business. We need to change that. But I'll get it when we come to it and we'll just take it off the agenda at that time. So, I'm sorry about that. Other consent item is request approval to appoint Stevens, Inc. as financial advisor to the city of Starkville relating to various bond issuances, including the not limited to general obligation bonds, bonds financed by special tax levy, revenue bonds, and tax increment financing bonds. Under Airport, we have request approval for grant writing services from Northstar Aerospace Solutions for a terminal building grant at George M. Bryan Field. Under Community Development and Planning, we have consideration of approval of appointing George Seals to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals for the unexpired term of Ward Four, expiring on June 30th of 2025. Under Engineering, we have approval of Garber LLC's contract to provide preliminary engineering and environmental services for the Stark Road and Hospital Road Extension Project not to exceed 261 to 160. Two is consideration of approval of Garber LLC Engineering Services Contract for the Spring Street and Highway 12 TAP Grant Project using MDOT Small Purchase Procedure and authorization for the mayor to execute any necessary MDOT paperwork for this project in accordance with the MDOT Local Public Agencies LTA Manual. Number three is consideration of consulting services contract from BD Consulting LLC for the parks project currently under design, including the Key and Needmore Community Center. Four is consideration of acceptance of the low bid for the construction of Louisville Street Traffic Signal Improvements from Palat Construction Services, Inc. Under Finance Administration, we have acceptance of the September 2022 financial statements. And number three is request approval of the final budget adjustments for fiscal year 2022. Under Fire Department, we have request permission to purchase two sets of Lion V-Force PDI Max firefighting turnout gear, coats, and pants from NACCO, Mississippi Contract Number 8200061254, in the amount of $37,690. Number two is request authorization for Chief Charles Yarborough, B.C. Roosevelt Harris in B.C. New Orleans Park, to travel to Hattiesburg, Mississippi to attend the 2022 Midwinter Fire Chiefs Conference, December 6th through the 8th, 2022, at a not-to-exceed advance total cost of $3,000, hotels, meals, registration, and travel. Number three is request authorization of Brian Arnett to travel to Gulfport, Mississippi to attend the 2022 Training Chiefs Conference, November the 2nd through the 4th, 2022, at a not-to-exceed advance total cost of $800, meals, hotel, and conference registration. Under HR, we have, number one, request authorization to hire Brian Arnett as a training chief in the Starkville Fire Department. Number two, request authorization to hire Ronald Evans and Andy Moore as water technicians for the Utilities Department. Number three is request authorization to hire Sabrina Phipps as an executive administrative assistant in the Starkville Utilities Department. Number four is request authorization to hire Aubrey Gann as a part-time engineering intern in the Starkville Utilities Department. Number five is request authorization to hire Jesslyn Gray as a customer service representative in the Starkville Utilities Department. Six is request authorization to hire Dustin Evans as a maintenance worker in the Sanitation and Environmental Services Department. Seven is request authorization to hire Brandon Hudson, Cameron Johnson, and Josh Reed as maintenance workers, too, in the Street Department. And eight is request authorization to hire William Fenimore and Jacob Vargo as entry-level firefighters in the Starkville Fire Department. Under Parks, we have request approval to purchase a John Deere Gator TX, State Contract 8200061319, in place of the John Deere Gator TX, State Contract 8200055711, approved March the 1st of 2022, at an additional cost of $1,273.85. Under Police Department, we have request approval to purchase SWAT gear, bulletproof helmets from United Shield International, lowest quote of $705 each. Over-the-head hearing protection with tactical communication capability from TNBC, Inc., at the lowest quote of $944.10 each, and long-term gas masks from Accurate Law Enforcement, lowest quote of $499.80, per a total of $25,786.71, of which $24,500 will be reimbursed by the fiscal year 2322 LE 347 Homeland Security Grant and remaining to be paid for police supplies. Two is request permission to accept and enter into a grant agreement with the state of Mississippi, Department of Public Safety Justice Assistance Grant, in the amount of $3,563, with a 25% local match of $1,187. And number three is request approval to extend the lease agreement with Harley Davidson of Central Mississippi for three motorcycles at $350 per motorcycle per month until April of 2024. Under Utilities Department, we have request authorization to approve change order number two, in the amount of $4,756 design changes for the T-Rex Digger truck. Two is request authorization to accept the lowest quote from Stuart Irby for the fire retardant uniform pants for the Electric Division, in the amount of $5,346.72. Three is request authorization to accept the lowest and best quote from Nesco for fire retardant uniform shirts for the Electric Division, in the amount of $8,281.36. And number four is request authorization to accept the quote from Anex for 64 water modules, a sole source provider, in the amount of $5,609.60. And that concludes the consent agenda items.
Thank you, Mayor.
You want to clean that up?
Yes, I do now. All right. Under the Mayor's Business, and I regret this, I'm sorry, I didn't pay more attention. Since the board had approved the item under Mayor's Business Nine as a consent agenda item, and then we then approved the consent agenda as it stood, I need a motion to take the item A that was on consent off the agenda and not take any action on it. Can I get a motion from someone to do that, please? I have a motion from Alden Bates. Thank you so much. And I need a second.
Second.
And a second from Alden Siskel. All those in favor could signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And as clarification, that will come back to us at the next meeting. There were some detail items that needed to be ironed out. And that was at the request of the Humane Society, so we were not doing that since one day, we were doing that at their request. So, all right. That was a long way to go back and get into our announcements, comments, et cetera. We do now have announcements. I do have one announcement, and Mr. Kemp is on the phone, so I think he's going to make sure I make this announcement for him. It is, in essence, the Utilities Department is having a home energy workshop. It will be located at 1504 Louisville from 10:00 to 11:00, and then from 5:30 to 6:30. And it is, I believe, tomorrow. He sent it to me, and I'm now looking at my phone trying to figure out exactly when it was. But it was tomorrow. Mr. Kemp, are you on the phone?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it tomorrow?
Yes, ma'am. It's tomorrow.
Thank you so much.
We have one during the day and one in the evening.
All right. Thank you. This is helping people to reduce the energy that they're drawing from their homes, so it's an opportunity to learn how to save money and save energy at your home. So, again, it's held at 1504 Louisville Street from 10:00 to 11:00 tomorrow, and then again from 5:30 to 6:30. So, my apologies for being less conversant in it, but I got it out. We have Bulldog Bash this weekend, and it's on Friday. It will be a big day for us. I know the Police Department and the Fire Department and the Sanitation Department are all geared up to make it the best possible. MSU is... They're going to start to set up stage and bands down there by where they have in the past, down there by the old Cadence Building, which is now the hub. And should have a lot of vendors and retail merchants are going to be out in the streets, so hopefully everyone will come to downtown sometime in the afternoons, around 3:00, and then enjoy visiting with all the folks who are out and about and take advantage of having some activities on a non-ballgame, non-home ballgame weekend. So, Bulldog Bash is always exciting, so I hope everyone takes the opportunity to come down and enjoy it and mingle with the kids, because they sometimes don't realize that we've got a downtown, and we need to show them that we do. So, all right. That's all I have. Alden Carver, anything from you?
I was going to echo what you said, just first of all, about the Pumpkin Palooza, which would be in between now and the next meeting, which is 27th. And then also back to what you were just saying about Bulldog Bash is the largest free concert in the state, and want to know from a crowd safety standpoint, just appreciate the Police Department and what they do and what it takes to come into a situation like this and put 30,000, 35,000 people. I was going to say, and former Chief Lyndon, while you're here, we always try to recognize a previous alderman, and especially a police chief, thank you for all the fine years of service you did and got the opportunity to work with you a little bit, and always good to see you. Hope retirement's treating you well, and y'all having a good time in retirement. So, how are you?
All right. Thank you. Alden Rupp?
No, ma'am.
All right. Alden Brooks?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Alden Bates?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Alden Siskel?
No, ma'am.
Vice Mayor?
No, ma'am.
Alden Vaughn?
No, ma'am, ma'am. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Next, we have Citizens Comments, and let me say that we've got two public hearings on the agenda, so if you're here to talk to us about those public hearings, then now will not be the time. Citizens Comments is more for more generic or items that are not related to the public hearings that are on the agenda. So, Mr. Turner, you have three minutes, and Ms. Harden will be keeping time, but you are welcome to talk to us about anything that you have concerns about. So, Mr. Turner?
Good evening, Mayor. My name is Avon Turner Ward, seven to the mayor, to the police department, to the fire department. Time will soon be changing, and Louisville and Wood Street, we got signs that it'll make it a little bit better for the pedestrian if we could get a flashing light that anyone that coming off Louisville, anyone approaching Louisville can know that it can be a dark area, but we can see each other and we won't run over each other. Also, Lyndon, that this drug that they got out that looked like candy, if the police can shine our light on where it looked like that, we won't get that mixed up with what is safe with Halloween right around the corner. And just want to be safe on that. And that gets some concerns of this.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone else wishing to speak under Citizens Comments? Anyone else wishing to speak under Citizens Comments? All right. Seeing none, I will close it for Citizens Comments. We have no public appearances this evening. We have public hearings, and our first public hearing is public hearing in consideration of UE 22-03, which is a request for use exception to allow for the uses office professional at 400 Greensboro Street in a TN-E zoning district. And just as a reference, we have received an email from William Starks, who is apparently the attorney for the Arnetts. They have asked to withdraw this item from the agenda, and since we have noticed it as a public hearing, we're going to go ahead and have that public hearing so that the folks here who want to can be on the record about it. But I am advised by our legal counsel that because they have... I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, I forgot you were going to recuse yourself. All right. Because we have noticed it as a public hearing, we're going to go ahead and have it as a public hearing. Applicants are not here, that I can see, so...
Mayor.
Legal counsel says that we cannot take it up for consideration, but that we will go ahead and have that public hearing so that the folks can be heard.
Mayor, does this mean to be brought up at a later date, or is this pulling it off the agenda indefinitely?
They have asked to pull it off the agenda, but Mr. Latimer can speak to that.
The letter mentions two different things. The letter mentions withdrawal, and then it mentions tabling, and then at the bottom it mentions withdrawal. So, it's a little bit ambiguous. Since we have a duly noticed and advertised public hearing, the thought process is you have to favor due process and allow people to be heard that have showed up to talk. But I would recommend the board not even discuss it and certainly not consider it, because the applicant has asked either for a tabling or a withdrawal. We'll clarify that going forward, and if it comes back at a later date, that'll be the case.
So, because they've withdrawn, we can't make any type of motion to deny or approve tonight?
No, because they're in charge of their application.
Okay.
Counselor, don't we have to? We have to approve what the front plan is on the board that's sent to us? I mean, we have to either approve or deny. We don't?
Not if the applicant has withdrawn their application.
So, that takes it off the table?
That's right. The only thing we're doing now is having a duly noticed public hearing, because it's been advertised by our UDC specs, and that's what we need to do for due process.
But that doesn't mean for due process. It means that this will come back to our board again unless... Will it if it's withdrawn?
Might or it might not, depending on what the Arnetts want.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes. So, with the change in the UDC, just previously, it would not have come to us had they not appealed the denial from the plan of government, is that correct? Now, with the new... With the new home, it automatically comes to us.
It does.
So, regardless, even though they pulled the application, it still comes to us and we've noticed hearings.
The only difference denied is you don't have anything to consider, because they've asked for the application to be pulled.
And let's be clear, we didn't get that email until like 5:00 this evening, so it was late in arriving to us, so we didn't have any opportunity to have any back and forth to understand exactly what their desires and intents are. So, Alden Rupp, I saw your hand.
So, what can or can't be done with the property in the interim?
It has to be used according to our zone and according to our code, and if there are any violations, that would be a code-enforcing issue.
Okay. Thank you. But we are going to go ahead, and if you will do a, let's say, a truncating... Anything? Alden Vaughn, nothing?
Okay.
All right. Alden Siskel? Okay. Mr. Havlin?
Okay. This is a request by Will and Stephanie Arnett to use... To have a real estate brokerage operation in the house at the corner, located at 400 Greensboro Street, on the corner of Raymond and Greensboro. This application couldn't be processed as a home occupation, because they're not going to reside at the house. Therefore, the only way for them to have the real estate office in there was to go through the use exception to have professional office use classification. And of course, this was noticed properly and all that. And at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, it was recommended for denial unanimously.
Okay. All right. Nothing further. The applicant's not here. So, anything from the board in requiring of Mr. Havlin before I open it as a public hearing? Okay. I'll open it as a public hearing, and I think a number of you are here for this particular item. If you would please, if there's a spokesperson that wants to speak, rather than having, you know, 40 different folks, that'd be great, but you certainly may. I don't want to stifle you, but there are 15 minutes available to those who are in favor or against, so.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Board, I'll be brief, since the issues changed a little bit, but just since we're here and we have organized. I'm here to voice my personal opposition. My name is Jeremy Murdock, 502 Greensboro Street in Ward One, as well as represent the neighborhood. In the original planning and zoning packet, that's also part of your packet, you'll find a letter from our neighborhood. Rather than, you know, showing up with pitchforks and torches, we organize our thoughts into the letter. Wouldn't call it a petition. It's our organized response to the request. Obviously, we're very much in opposition. We had over 40 signatures on the letter, had about 30 people at planning and zoning. I think we have about 20 tonight. If you're from the neighborhood and opposed to the request, would you please stand? So, get shown tonight. We have a lot of concerns, obviously, with the request. But I think the main stance is that we feel it's critical that the primary uses of the houses in our neighborhood remain residential. That's probably our biggest stance on that. So, thank you for your time, unless maybe you have any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else speaking against the applicant's request? Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the request? In favor? All right. Seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing, and we will not be taking any action this evening, and so...
Can we discuss this, though, while we've got...
There's nothing...
...to discuss?
There's really nothing.
Is this a legal maneuver, Counselor? Just to put this thing on hold to bring it back at some point in time?
We don't know, but I would advise there's no discussion indicated.
At this point, if they bring it back, then we will have that opportunity to go through the process again, but since we don't have any... We don't know what's in their intention or with their intention of the withdrawal, then I think probably leaving it alone until we have more information or until they make their desires known. Alden Siskel?
And I would ask, if they bring it forward again, do we go through the noticing for a public hearing and allow people to come back and make comments a second time?
Depends on how they want to bring it forward the next time, whether it's the same request or whether it's altered in any way. We'll just have to wait and see.
That's like late in the middle.
All right. All right. Saying that, we will move to our next public hearing, which is public hearing in consideration of the variance 22-11. And Mr. Havlin, I will let you proceed.
This is SE 22-05 and VA 22-11. This is a request by Tabor Construction and Development for a variance from maximum lot width, a maximum frontage buildout, and a special exception to allow a reduction in the parking minimum requirements for proposed development on Russell Street. And just to amplify to you to the site, this is the intersection of Jarnigan and Russell, and it's these three lots that are right here. There's a vacant lot on the corner, then these two lots have, I believe, a duplex commercial operation. The applicant is currently proposing to develop the site in a mixed-use development with residential and commercial units in two buildings. He has indicated that the residential units will be condo units for sale. The parking for the site will be located in the rear of the property, and the new street parking will be added along Russell Street, approximately eight spots right here, and there's 39 spots on the property. The three existing lots will be combined into two lots. The width for the proposed lots is 134.5 feet, for the western lot, 129 feet for the eastern lot. The maximum lot width for a T-5C zoning district is 120 feet. The proposed percentage of frontage buildout on the side setback of the corner lot, to explain what that is, the percentage of front buildout is how much space does this building occupy along this lot line? So, along this lot line along Jarnigan, it is supposed to occupy a total of 65%. Due to the angle of how this is, for an acute angle, they're only able to build out at 40.5 plus have the parking in the rear. And so, that is the second variance request, is to reduce that percentage of buildout. Then the third request, which is a special exception, is a reduction in the parking. Each lot will have one mixed-use building, but both lots will share this parking lot in the rear. The residential portion requires one space per bedroom for both sites. The total count on the project is 41 bedrooms. That's 10 one-bedrooms, eight two-bedrooms, and five three-bedroom units. The parking for the non-residential portion will vary based on the use. Considering the highest use or the most parking required for any use comes out to 1,270 square feet per building, which require four spaces per building. So, in the UDC, we have this. It's called the Parking Reductions Required Parking. This is sort of like a calculator built into the code, that if there's something mixed use, it takes into consideration that you're not going to occupy office at the same time you're occupying residential. And so, you basically enter the numbers that are required for the code for the use, and then you take the highest of these numbers along the bottom. So, in this case, the highest was 48 spaces required. The proposed site plan shows 39 spaces in the rear, plus there's eight public spaces being added along the road. So, a total of 47 parking spaces are being built in conjunction with this development, but only 39 of them on the site. Section 3.71 is a criteria for just a variance for any zoning district. There is also some additional requirements for any property that's within the form-based districts. And with the special exception, it has its own set of criteria for review and approval. And then there's one additional thing about following the intent of form-based districts. And all of this stuff is in both of the staff reports that were included in your packet. The request was noticed in accordance with UDC. 13 property owners of record with 160 feet of the property are notified directly by mail. A legal ad was published on September 11th, 2022, in Starkville Daily News, and a sign posted on the property in a conspicuous location. As of this date, the planning office has received three phone calls, one for, one against, and one requesting information about the request. Staff had also received three letters against the request and four letters in support of the request. On September 28th, 2022, the Board of Adjustments and Appeal voted unanimously to recommend approval of the variance portions of this. And on October 11th, 2022, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted four to two to recommend approval of the special exception. Is there any questions?
All right. Any questions of Mr. Havlin before we get the applicant out? Mr. Brooks?
The lot going from three to two, is that administrated?
That would be... That would come before you, too, as a minor subdivision. But this is just all doing the... You know, they're not going to subdivide the lots if they can't get this approval.
Okay. I wondered how that would go. And, you know, we talked about this at length, you know, in the previous code allowing these developers to count these parking lots, parking spaces that they build on the street. If he's building, hanging the old street, eight parking places?
Yeah. Eight total on the street.
Eight total on the street, plus 39 on the site.
Correct.
Forty-seven. And using your calculator, essentially, you're coming up one show up.
Forty-eight.
So, all right.
Rounded up to 48.
Yeah. Rounded up to 48. So, he's about there, under the way we used to count. But he is building, and they aren't public, but those folks will have access.
Correct.
Okay. All right. That's all, Mayor.
Alden Vaughn?
Mr. Havlin, how many you say total?
It's a total of 39 on site and then eight...
Thirty-nine on site. How many total altogether, you said? Forty-seven?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven, thirty-nine on site. But we already have a street problem, so we're going to be putting, putting eight on the road. We already got a street problem. So you're going to put eight on the road? Eight on the street?
Yeah, there's eight additional parking right there along Russell Street.
Good calculation. Thank you.
Anything else? Anyone, Alvin Beatty?
Yes, thank you, ma'am. Under the old code, what would have been allowed?
Under the old code, it would have been one per unit for the parking.
So what would have been total on that?
Uh, at the count of the units, you want to say? Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. So it's more stringent now with the new code?
Correct. The old code was just parking it per unit, and it did take into consideration people doing three and five bedroom unit, a parking.
But that caused an issue on that big park, that big, uh, complex crossroad on University Boulevard across.
The Vista. Yep. The Vista was parked one per unit.
Like a hundred fewer parking spaces than there are bedrooms in there, or something close to that.
Correct, and I believe it's the same thing with College View further down the hill.
Which, in, in my opinion, is, is a necessitated paid parking in the cotton district, that people, you know, that, that hundred cars, that extra spilt over in the cotton. Uh, second question is this, building across the street, do they have, would they need new code for sufficient parking places to compare with, with bedrooms?
Flats?
The flats, yes. Um, I think they would be close to, closer to the new code than some other developments, but I don't think they would need it. But I, I really don't remember the numbers off the top of my head.
Oh, one other question. Uh, the new parking spaces out front, is that going to be bike lane, any, any?
Oh, no, it would be built like from where the current curb is inward toward their property, and then push the sidewalk.
So I think it'll go in with the curb and go in.
Right.
Accomplish that.
Yeah, the road, the road width and bike lane width and all that would be affected. It's actually taking up where the current sidewalk is and just moving everything over.
Is, is the developer building going to incur that cost?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. If there's nothing else, we'll, we'll ask the applicants to come up. I sent Mr. Tabor in the back, Mike there. Mr. Tabor, would you like to come up and, I think you have a presentation if I'm judging by the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Yes.
Okay.
I do?
Yes.
One question before I get started. Um, if there's somebody speaking against, I have a chance to rebut, or do I need to go ahead and address any concerns I think neighbors have?
I'll give you an opportunity to rebut.
You will? Okay.
I don't have that one, but we're.
You know?
I'm pretty much done.
Sorry.
Come on, man.
Walked in at the different heat.
My name is Jeremy Tabor. I'm president of Tabor Construction and Development. Uh, we have been doing business here in Starfall for almost thirty years. Uh, you may be familiar with some of our projects, but our niche has been second home family housing condominium developments. I also have a parent company called Tabor Management, and we manage most of the properties that we build from association standpoint. Uh, we take it very serious in how we develop our projects. Several you may know of, In-Town, Annabella, Bell Grove, Delphi, Riddle Run, The Lost, University Club, and then Grand Junction is our most recent project on University Drive. Um, I want to talk a good bit tonight about these type projects versus, you know, what I think some of the concerns are on parking, but, um, I want to talk about the site a little bit at first. Uh, all the projects that we've done in Starfall have been different. I don't do the same cookie cover project each time. And if you've seen any of our projects, we pay a lot of attention to detail and use. Uh, currently, this site plan, we asked for two variances. Uh, the biggest component with designing something I think could be favorable for the city on this particular lot, it's only point seven acres, and it's very odd shaped. And Russell is radial and Jarnigan is kind of inverted, it's not perpendicular. So there were a lot of constraints on how we could lay it out. Uh, there were two things we had to have. We had to have egress on Jarnigan and Russell, twenty-four feet. So, so that dictated a lot in far, as far as how the layout was. Uh, building height, we're looking at three stories, uh, but to, to get to a point that we could do it, we felt like parking underneath in this layout was the most conducive to the project. Um, and then on Jarnigan, on that variance that we asked for, the depth of that building will allow us to do a nice design on that side, so we'll basically have two fronts, which is required by code anyway, that's correct.
Correct.
But, uh, I'll go now kind of to the brochure that you've got. Um, let's go to page two. Talking about the site, uh, we feel like this development improves the existing site. Uh, Russell Street is a great corridor that will be going from our downtown area to the university. And we feel like this would be a good bridge, uh, to some of the other developments on Russell. Uh, increases connectivity, walkability. It's going to be very good for parking values. We expect the sales prices probably to be around four hundred dollars square feet if inflation keeps up, so.
Four hundred dollars a square?
We're, we're at three ninety at Grand Junction, so, uh, it would be great for the tax base. Uh, let's talk about demand a little bit. Um, currently, Grand Junction Phase Three in the downtown corridor is the only new condominium construction or second home project under, underway. Uh, we've sold out on Phase One and Two, and in Phase Three, we have fourteen of seventeen pre-sold. Uh, and we've still four months out. So currently, we've got a big alumni base, we've got a lot of supporters, and they need somewhere to stay. And they want to come here, and right now, the downtown areas where everybody wants to be. Uh, and we feel like that we can offer product that would be very suitable to that. Uh, the way we've laid it out, we think it allows for some creativity in design, and we're not trying to, I guess, overpackage or overbuild the site. Uh, so the challenge, you know, when it comes to parking, if, if y'all flip to the next page on the Unified Development Code, um, I was on several committees when I was on the Main Street Board, uh, and I was involved in changing the code so we could have more density, uh, have the building parked up front, modify the codes. You know, our old commercial codes were so parking restricted that you really couldn't develop a lot of downtown with the prices. But the Unified Development Code has allowed, uh, some developments in the area, and I think it's, it's a huge plus. Uh, projects like the balcony in Midtown, um, Grand Junction, you know, what's, what has created is walkability. That's when we see everybody walking around, you know, we've got people down on the cores we wanted, and have that, help the commercial restaurants. Yes, it has. Is it creating a destination area? Yes, it is, and we're still becoming, and we're coming. But we've got to have a mixture of products. You know, we don't need all student housing, we don't need all alumni housing, but, but we need a balance of both. And this is kind of where we feel like Tabor has a niche, you know, in Starfall. Um, the Unified Development Code does not do a great job in recognizing the different types of residential parking needs. So, one thing we did, and if you'll flip over to the next page, is we kind of wanted to show everybody the differences. Um, so the first, I don't know if y'all got to the first color picture, uh, you've got the balcony. The balcony is on South Montgomery, which is behind Central Station where my office is. Uh, the balcony is all student housing rentals, one owner. And does that parking lot look full? It's a hundred percent full, correct? Anybody agree with that? Alright, let's flip to the next page, and we'll look at Russell Street Flats. So this is across the street from the site that we have. Now, Russell Street, I don't know the exact number, but it has, uh, several units have been converted to condos, so it's, it's not a hundred percent student rental anymore. But if you look at it, you know, it's probably fifty percent parked on Tuesday, okay? Alright, we're going to flip again, and we're going to look at three or four condominium developments. Uh, the next one I've got in here is Grand Junction. Grand Junction, if you look at the back parking lot, is where the parking is for the, the site, you'll see about ten parking spots close to the building. Um, most of the other is staging of equipment. Uh, the bottom part of it, that, the area that is full, is, is Hummel Tacos portion. But it's, it's not overparked. Let's flip again, one more page to Cotton Quarters, which is on Jarnigan, which is on the other side of the church, which is, uh, abutting the property we have. Uh, it's only got two, two cars. Okay, that's a second home project. We, we actually managed that site. Alright, let's flip again to another second home project on Russell Street, which is a comparative type project, which is the Gin, which is the corner of, well, it's not the corner of twelve, but it's closer to twelve. If you look at the Gin, it's, it's, it's less than ten percent parked on Tuesday. Now, this is a prime example of a second home alumni-driven project. It is not overparked. These type products, let's flip one more, look at Bell Grove on South Montgomery. This is one of the developments we did. Uh, this particular project is second home. It does allow rentals, but it wasn't built as a student, it was individual owners, but it does allow rentals in the association docks. You know, it's less than ten percent parked. Um, we'll flip over one more to University Club, that is on Spring Street behind Buffalo Wild Wings. Um, that development does allow the RBO rentals, but it, but is individually owned. It's, it's less than ten percent parked. So if you'll flip to the last, uh, little comparison chart, the Summit is what we're calling this project. Uh, total required is forty-one. Um, across the street at Whitney is a student housing project. They have forty-seven. The Gin is condominium, and then Grand Junction one, two. So I kind of went down and put the total parking available and then gave the ratios. Um, and if you look at the ratios, the Summit would be above those just on the residential parking. When you add the commercial, which you do have to add, you know, drops it down to eighty percent. Um, I'm not, I prefer not to do the commercial, but the code requires it. But, you know, we found I'll do in retail, which would have less of a, of a, a burden on the parking. But, um, I would like the board to, you know, I, I know there has been some concern with the project across the street from Bulldog Burger, but that is a student housing project, and you will need one, you know, you're going to have one person per car in every bedroom. This project is going to be ten percent parked, eighty-five percent in the year, your six big gains, it'll be full. Simple Bulldog Weekend, it'll be full, and probably if we go to Regional. But other than that, it's not going to be a parking burden. Uh, and then, uh, you know, the eight we're adding to the street are eight that aren't there now. So this will actually increase the, the use of the parking there. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the board at this point in time? Alvin Beatty?
Mr. Tabor, how you doing?
Good.
First thing, have you met with those people over there?
Uh, I tried to meet with them pre-P and Z meeting, um, and then I talked to them about possibly purchasing, working with them on some of them, they were not interested. After the P and Z meeting, I got some numbers, I got my numbers, but no, I've not talked to them since then.
First thing I heard you say, easy walk downtown. Second thing I heard you say, sack, tax base. Second thing I heard you say, alumni base. You said nothing about these people residents that live, and you, I hear you mentioned none of that. So what about, what about the, you said walk downtown, a easy walk downtown, that what you said. You said it's a tax base for the city, that what you said. You said alumni base for the alumni that come in here. I heard you say no concern about those people living over there, none. Everything you talked about, it was about your project. Nothing about the citizens that have been living there all their life, some of them probably been living there all their life. I heard you say anything about this. So the project is more important than the people that live there, to me, that what you're saying.
You done asked the two, four places that are on the site?
What else? The variance that you looking for, you, you, you're not taking the, you're not taking the people that live there on the consideration. Only thing you worry about, these things that you got. I'm just repeating what you said. You said these things. That's all I'm repeating. I'm just repeating what you said. But you never mentioned them at all. And they, they should have been considered in this anyway. You should have talked to them before you got all your plans up. Am I right? I mean, they should have been considered. They should have been considered somewhere.
Sir?
They should have been considered somewhere. You don't hear me? They should have been considered somewhere before you drew all this up. Easy walk downtown?
Are you referring to the church, or are you referring to just anybody?
I'm, I'm referring to the residents and the citizens that live on Jarnigan Street and Russell Street and all there. That's one of my concerns about this.
That's what the notice is set out for, for them to communicate.
You the developer, seem like you would have wanted to communicate with them before you did this. I mean, you the developer, look like, when you came here, you should have wanted everything to smooth, run smooth. I mean, then a board wouldn't mind giving a variance, but when you ain't considered them in your plans, that's the only thing I'm saying. They was not considered in your plan. That's the only thing I'm saying. Why?
That's your opinion.
Well, you just said, you didn't talk to none of them.
I talked to the church.
More than the church lived.
I've, I've never gone to every single house, every development for that. That's just not normal. That's what the meeting is for. They can come and we can call, we can talk after the meeting. But you made your point, can we move on to the next one?
Oh, wait a minute, may I have?
Alvin, Alvin's on, he has the floor.
I have the floor. How you going to tell me to move on? This is our meeting, not yours. But I'm, my, my concern, you're not concerned about the people. You're not, you have no concern for those people at all.
That's, that's not fair.
Anything else, Alvin Beatty?
May I, yeah?
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Alvin Beatty, did I hear your voice?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Um, Mr. Tabor, this, this will be, I know that the type projects you build are really well constructed, and, you know, they'll, we won't have any issues with architectural review, things like that in the process. Uh, the thing that I've seen since I've lived here for seventeen years is that when a developer approaches a project, they know what that track looks like over there by the property. And they know, should know what loss is going to entail as far as number of units, and, and you start looking at financing, pre-sales, things like that. And before the properties optioned or purchased, there should be a really good idea of whether or not there's sufficient, in, in, in plan, in, in consultation result with the, with the planning department stuff, to know whether it's going to require an exception or variance or something like that in order for the project to work. And my experience on the board and what, just from, from an outsider's perspective in Starfall, what I've looked at is that developers start things here almost with the idea of, okay, it's going to have to have an exception, and we're going to go to the board, and we're going to be granted those exceptions in order to make those things work. It's almost a foregone conclusion. And, and there again, this is a beautiful project, and, and three stories tall, and Russell, I see all the, the benefits of the, of aesthetics of it, and, uh, and, and kind of what we're trying to do with, with Russell Street. And at the same time, I mean, when you get to the point where you look at the fin, financial part or something like this, and, and how much, how many units you've got, I mean, there's, it's like shopping centers are built, anything else built like that, you look at the cost, you, you look at your capital costs, you look at how much revenue you can derive from the leases, or whatever your revenue source is going to come from, and you, and you proceed forward if the numbers work, or you don't proceed forward if the numbers don't. And that's the only thing that, that I do. I think it's, it's almost, it's, it's a foregone conclusion, because we, we have, it's happened a lot here, is developers will go right, plow right ahead on something, and then they'll come in to P and Z later, after they've already started the process of, of engineering and, and, and architectural plans and things like that, to design a project that they know is not going to meet code, and, and are going to have to ask for exceptions for, and on the assumption that, that we, the decision grant was supposed to think, rather than coming in on plan on the front end saying, hey, you know, this is going to have, be ten parking places short, you know? How, how do I make this work?
Well, this is what I've done. This is preliminary. I mean, you know, there, there is a...
But you opted to purchase that property.
No, sir, it's, it's, I mean, it's for purchase, it's, it's not, I mean, I've not closed on it. I'm in my due diligence period. But there, but there is a distance you have to go to be able to get enough information together to have a basic set of numbers.
You got to put all the numbers.
You got to, you know, you know, so you just get to a certain point, you know. Unfortunately, you know, I'm doing a project similar at Grand Junction, so we've got some current cost, and we've got, you know, a great thing for the city, the land costs are up there, you know. We've had some big projects, and people want to get a fair value, and they should, you know, with great locations.
The drive, the land cost.
Yeah, you said, so the land cost drives, drives it, and so, you know, kind of what I always do, we try to do as much as we can, but, you know, if you did a full set of architectural drawings, you'd be at six percent cost of the project. So you can't afford that. But what we can do is, uh, you know, I went with the city and did preliminary site planning, we made sure we could get the infrastructure in, the, uh, we sat with all the department heads to look at egress, uh, and we've talked about, you know, taking the electrical lines down. So I've done everything I could do without going fully forward with purchase. And so that, that's, that's kind of, kind of where we're at, you know. This is, this is a, this is where I think I've got to be to be able to proceed with the project, you know. And it, it, you know, it looks like a very small site, but guys, this is a ten million dollar project. And that's, that's, you, you got, you got to have a little wiggle room, you know, to just, you can't, I, I'm not going to jump forward with it.
I appreciate you.
Anything else, Alvin Beatty?
We, we've got, we have projects, we, we have shopping centers that built here. We, we've, we've, we have, uh, granted tax income finance to retail shopping centers, so the developer, get the numbers down, we can lease the building for it, the project to work. And that's, that's what, that's where we are in Starfall now. Land cost, and whatever drives the cost up on retail developments here are such that, that we're having to just about do TIPS on everything that's built here now, or they, or it's come, they come and ask, or you're not, but, but come and ask for TIPS and things, because they can't get their capital cost, you know, down to where they leased to whoever they leased to, uh, per square foot and make their numbers work. And so, I mean, it's, it is what it is, but that, that's, that's also something that, that's now almost customary now, is developers, when they come, they come with that. No, they build a TIP in on the front end. It's built into, it's built into the model, their, their, their construction model when they, when they come. And, uh, but, uh, anyway, uh, I give them there, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else before Alvin's public hearing?
Just one question, just to refresh everybody's memory. So what's located on those, on those three lots now? Was it two duplexes?
There are two, uh, four complexes that are rentals, and then there's an empty lot.
Okay, empty lot on the corner.
Yeah, empty lot on the corner. And then we got, we got the graveyard to one side, the Russell Street Flats across the street, the church behind, and the Whitney is across the street, and those two hivers on the corner. Those are neighbors.
And that one is directly adjacent to the lake of Liden? Is it, is it residential in? I thought it had some commercial.
I think it's, uh, you got a commercial behind it. Those two on the corner, I think those are Mickey's, huh? The, the, the commercial behind it's Mickey's.
Okay, good. Well, that's, that's all I have to, just trying to make sure.
Okay.
Is the Whitney the building that crossed Jarnigan from?
Yes, sir.
And that's the one you say you're going to have a higher percentage of parking than they would?
Yes, I, we'll have less parking pressure than they would.
Alright, let's open it as a public hearing, so if you would step aside, please. And we'll open it as a public hearing, and we'll give, uh, each side, pro or con, we'll give everyone fifteen minutes. So if you have a spokesperson, I see a number of, of folks who may be from the church, if you have a spokesperson, that would be lovely. Um, if you'll come up and identify yourself, please, sir. And, um, Ms. Harden, if you would... And, um, Ms. Harden, if you would do some time before us, thank you.
Yes, good evening, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
To the board. I am the pastor of the church that was mentioned, you know, on, on Jonathan Street, and...
What's your name, sir?
Lawrence Tate, Pastor Lawrence Tate.
Mr. Tate, okay.
Yes. And before, as the gentleman just left, he said he talked to us. I haven't talked to him. Only time I talked to him was last Tuesday out there in the forty year. He put a note on the door and said he wanted to buy our property. He talked to one of my trustees, but he hadn't talked to me. But we told him the property was not for sale. And what we're here to, asking y'all to consider our church. It's just like this courthouse is newly built. And, you know, there's a church next door. When y'all built this courthouse, I believe that y'all took in consideration the church next door. You know, even though we're not as big as the church next door, but we just important as the church next door. Because if he, you allow him to have that parking lot, see, he talking about that they's only, only going to be there at a certain period of time of the year for games and this and that. He's looking at the money, but you got to look at the quality of the people that live in this community. If he, we do service every Sunday. So that's going to cause us to be, the park already there is already limited. So for us to get to our sanctuary, and if you allow him to take up all that park, it's going to be impossible for my members to get to the church, for us to get to our church. Because where he's telling my building at, our church is right next, our daycare is right there on that line. You know, so we are asking y'all to take in consideration. If he going to build that property, it's taking consideration, just like the alderman said. Take in consideration of the people that live in that area. Take a consideration of the church that there. We worship there. Our rights to, to worship is in stake here. Because like I said, if he take up all that park, it's going to make it impossible for us to get to our church. We didn't, we didn't, we didn't look at it all types of ways. And it's going to be congested. So we asking y'all to take in consideration of our church that's there.
Thank you, Pastor Tate.
Amen.
Anyone else? Speaking, and this is speaking against the project.
Uh, I'm Ross Williams from Ward Seven. A member of First Church of Christ Holdings, which is six oh nine Glisten Street. You'll see right below the Russell flats there. Um, we are, the passionate members of First Church are in support of the Church of the Living God's stance to oppose the approval of this request to allow for deviation. Um, the church expressed their disapproval at a previous meeting due to the hardship it would cause them to, by reducing the availability of parking for their church and daycare center. Although de- developers may have offered them to share parking. The, they were to develop green space on the church's property, it would call cut on the recreational space needed for their daycare center. And we at First Church faced a similar dilemma when the Cohorn property adjacent to our church was sold and developed as the Russell Street flats. Uh, the previous Cohorn Big Star building was on the property line, and they placed a heating and air, air unit on the church's property. And in lieu of this, Ms. Cohorn allowed church members to park on his property. Uh, the Russell Street flats development caused us to either build on existing green space or purchase adjacent property, build a parking lot on. We were blessed to be able to get it developed, we, we were able to purchase property for a parking lot. However, we faced many obstacles to get it developed. These obstacles included asbestos abatement and demolition of the, an existing structure, and scrutiny of your boards and commission that included entries and exits, and number of parking spaces, buffer, green space, and landscaping. And other churches have faced similar scrutiny for their parking lot developments. We desire fairness when it comes to considering exception, as it seems that the wants of non-residents are considered over the needs of longstanding permanent citizens, who are also the registered voters in this matter. And I'd like just to add to the letter that we sent, that we, our church spent over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to develop a parking lot. Um, and that was a hardship on us, but it was needed, because we no longer had the availability of parking where, you see the parking is now for Russell Street flats. That's where we parked, adjacent to our church. So there's a lot of encroachment in this area, very dense. And it was expressed at the previous zoning meeting that there's a lot of parking in the Cotton District. And, uh, it's, it's going to, it's just posing different, uh, uh, problems when you allow these exceptions. That it's going to add to that problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Anyone else? This is against, this is against. This is against, anyone else against? How many minutes have we got, Ms. Harden? Okay. Mr. Turner, okay.
Good evening, men and women, my name is Alvin Turner. Our, uh, years ago, I attended the, uh, uh, Church of the Living God, London Light. Our script says, "For a purpose man to gain the whole world loses so." Um, we are blessed that the Tornators and stuff have went around us. But, uh, the message of God people, for a person to gain, uh, we could wind up. The Tornator won't go around, they'll come cross. Our, uh, uh, let's be fair to God people. And we are blessed that we don't have the crime that other cities have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Good evening, to our members of the board, my name is Lola Watson.
I'm a trustee. Ms. Watson?
That's right.
Okay.
I'm trustee at the Church of the Living God. And I stand once again to say, as I said last week, we have no problem with Mr. Tabor building his condominium. I ain't putting out some right, but y'all don't want to talk about it. Uh, my only request is that he stay within the limits of the property that he already have, and not try to reach out and, and just like, look like to me just unreligiously try to buy land from us, or just take it from us, so he can have that extra parking space for his condominium. And if he say he got forty-seven rooms, how come he can't reduce it to thirty-seven rooms and use that other space for parking? I don't, I don't, I don't understand that. We saying, don't build it, build it. But you just, uh, go back and do your drawing over, like somebody said. Did you not take that into consideration before you, uh, made all these other drawings and stuff? You had to consider all that you got. If I got a small space here, I know I got to work within that space and not try to make, or force somebody else to give me theirs. And I don't feel that, that it's right. And so, that's, that's my opinion. Now, Pastor, then ask all our members standing, would Church Living God members stand, please? We all here, just standing to agree. We, we are very upset at this particular time. Would y'all please take that into consideration?
Mr. Mayor, thank you, thank you, Ms. Watson. Anyone else wishing to speak against? Anyone else? No, I'm sorry, no, ma'am. Anyone else? All right, anyone wishing to speak in favor of the project?
Good evening, board members. Mayor, nice to see all of you, long time no see. Hey, how you? Alderman as well. My name is Robert Camp, I'm with the Cotton District, also with Camp Brothers Real Estate LLC. I think we fall a little bit outside of the, uh, the radius of being noticed. But I will say to Alderman Vaughn here, I have been a member of that, resident of that neighborhood for quite some time, even though currently I now reside on, on Greensboro Street. But, um, I, I'll tell you guys, and ladies as well, we were actually approached by the, this, one of the same property owners about this property. Um, and it obviously was more than what we wanted to take on at this time. Uh, but I will tell you, without a doubt, that this property is going to be developed. And it's just a matter of who we want to develop it. And so, uh, my thoughts are, is that we have a, a very competent and, uh, good developer here in town who does good things, is local. Um, and I feel like that we would be doing injustice to things if we did not allow him to do what he needed to do. So that's, that's my time.
Thank you, Mr. Tabor. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else? All right, I'm assuming Emily, you're not going to speak in favor, you're leaving. Okay, all right, sorry, I just saw you get up. Okay, all right, um, I will close it as a public hearing, and we will now move to deliberation and discussion among board members. Do I, do I have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, you did, you did want to rebut. Come ahead, I'm, I'm sorry.
Want to apologize for getting loud. But it, it, it hurts my feelings, I care a lot about this community, and I care a lot about all the citizens. I did contact the church two or three months ago, actually called the mayor and asked if she knew someone, uh, or what their future plans were, if they want to stay there, do anything. I talked to, I think the lady there, I told her about the development, what we're thinking. I said, we might be interested in purchase or sharing. She talked to the trustees, called me back and said, we would not be interested in this town. I didn't hear anything else until we got further along into the P and Z from the business standpoint. I've, you know, I'd already got past points, been able to change gears as far as what we do. But I do want to say I did talk to them. Now, currently, I don't think we're taking away any parking, but they, we're not, we're not taking parking away from them. I think they're parking an empty lot that we're purchasing. There was no parking agreement with that in my purchase agreement. So we're not taking away parking from them. And I do know there is available land on their site, if they wanted to add parking, they could. Uh, and then our parking would be managed, you know, on big weekends, because we have, uh, security, our association. We've got pretty much security on, on the high, all our high-profile areas. So, uh, you know, we will definitely take into consideration, you know, if the church anything concerned, so if I have somebody in contact, uh, you know, if they're going to have parking, it's rather, rather, you know. But there probably be some times where, when I can be able to park, and they'll have this street parking, you know, to use. But, uh, I just wanted to clarify that I did, I have concern. We're not doing anything, we're not taking away parking from them, we're not doing anything for, for them to get access to their parking. Uh, and I know it's, you know, it's just something new, so, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tabor. Sorry about that, I, okay. All right, so we close it as a public hearing, and we will have a discussion among the board at this point in time. Okay, now, we can't keep going back and forth and back and forth. All right, one, one last comment, okay, and this is against, okay. And if you would, tell me your name, please, ma'am.
Good evening, my name is Elizabeth Yon, I'm speaking for the Church of the Living God. I was listening to him when he said he had one, two, three bedroom, two bedroom, one bedroom, five or six. I cannot understand you got one parking place for each unit you got. Hundred in the world that I see if I want a person got, um, rent for roommates, where they don't park yet. You ain't got but one parking place for every room. It's not going to work. Like we said, we not against him where he want to build it. You know, it's, you got to come to the conclusion, hey, I got to figure this another way out, you know what I'm saying? But it, like I say, it's not no room, because you go on Jonathan Street, you got two-way, up and down. When you can't go up past all of our church, that's one way. And the parking place, he was saying he got a, a unit there right in front of the church, where they got parking place and park on side of the road. We can't park on the side of the road, we park on the side of the road, they're going to tow our car. And we had to make room for, when we have like church anniversary and stuff, people come in, that's, that's your parking, we had to find parking in the grass, all the grass and everything, you know. Couldn't park on the side of the road. Cause there's a two-way, how can you get it for one car? Ain't no way. But like I said, we don't have nothing against where, you know, just have to make another decision. That's all I got to say, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yon. All right. We're done. All right, uh, any discussion among the board at this time, is there a motion? Alvin Vaughn?
I always support that project, I always say. But my thing is, we all live without a parking issue, it starts with the other way around. And my, my concern is kind of like, you know what I'm saying? Can't you cut these apartments down with the fifth apartment that you had? That's my biggest concern. Take these people over these generations. I always support it, always support the project. Great project, always a great project. But it's the technical calendar, we really do that. We just don't look for people, just because we have authority to do it. It's not fair. And you know how I am, but we shouldn't have authority. It's not fair. I yield for that.
Thank you, Alvin Vaughn. Alvin Beatty?
Oh, and I guess this question was, Tabor, is there any reduction in size, or make it, would you reduce the size by one condo? Or, or something where the, the...
Only let him come to the, so that he heard as part of the record.
Where the number of parking spaces go down, instead you still, it still works for you financially to do it? Uh, I mean, and I, let me, let me say this, what about on sunny mornings when it's, we play Georgia? And all condo, it's five years from now, all condo owners, children, and, and ever been friends are there. And a half dozen parking that church parking lot overnight. I mean, what church do, we have them all towed, and then we were towed. I mean, these people bought four hundred thousand al condos. And I mean, it just, that's what I'm saying, is they need, they don't need the parking space. It'd be inconvenient and, and, um, you know, it'd be a mess when that happens or something. What, I mean, those, that's, that's realistic scenario of, of, of that something. It won't happen much, but it will happen.
Well, the way we manage, uh, Grand Junction, you know, when the code was different, you know, when people buy it, they know on the front end how many parking passes they have they can hang and park on site. Um, you know, we do have pretty close to us the parking deck that hasn't been fully utilized, so that, you know, that's going to be an option. But the people buying, you know, you know, we'll, we'll have it, uh, at Grand Junction, the three-bedroom people got two, the two-bedrooms got, uh, one, you know, with, with one, you know, we had dead, everybody got a dedicated spot, and then there were so many other spots that, you know, first come, first served. But, you know, um, you know, we're talk, the weekends that we're talking about, that whole corridor is going to be under pressure. But the people that buy, know, know what parking, that they're going to have.
How many units is nineteen?
It's twenty-three.
Twenty-three?
Yeah.
So we had, we issued down South Montgomery, remember I first got on the board, was the developer, developer putting that, that development off South Montgomery. And we had, we granted several exceptions to them, setbacks, and, you know, architectural stuff where they didn't need it. And we asked them to look at the possibility of going to our, our hundred-year flood mitigation thing. They said, we just don't believe in it. I mean, that's, that's kind of the way that played out, and we approved it. And went on, it's went forward, it's been built now. But we, we conceded two or three times through the plans owner board, through exception, and through the board's approval of those exceptions, things to accommodate that, that development. And when it came time for them to step up and say, yeah, we, we go, you know, we'll, we'll find a way to put one less unit and put the retention bond a little bit larger, where we can accommodate the one hundred-year flood mitigation to the twenty-five-year, they said, no, we don't do that. And that, I, I just, I guess what I'm saying is, is anything short of twenty-three apartments that you could put, or units you could put in where this thing works, and where these people accommodate somewhat on this, on this thing?
We've got it.
So we're not a lot of his on.
Mr. Ham, we've got it kind of as thin as we feel like we can go forward with it. It's just kind of where we are with cost and it's, uh, and I know y'all know this, but it's a lot of risk to take on these projects. You have no idea, we were very fortunate with Grand Junction going through COVID and everything else, so. Just because we're going to do the project doesn't mean that I'll be financially successful. I mean, this is an investment in Starwood.
Hope we won't have a COVID thing.
No. You know, y'all can't imagine, we've had to deal with, you know, with inventory and everything else, so.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Alvin's is...
Um, I, I'd like to say something that might give some comfort to the, the people from the Church of the Living God and, and to Mr. Tabor's, uh, points that he's making, too. When I attend church, I attend church at the Episcopal Church of the Resurrection, which is at the corner of, um, Montgomery and, um, Main Street, University Drive, I think it is at that point in time. So it is very much a downtown church like your... So it is very much a downtown church like yours, with a small parking lot. We own some property that runs along and back to Highway 182 that we use for overflow, but on those rare occasions when we have, let's be honest, on Christmas and Easter, there's just not enough parking. If the bishop is in town, there's not enough parking. But as a rule, we're able to accommodate our parking and also use public parking in the area, some in the project there on the corner that you did, and along the street, across at the library, and we walk that block or so into church. During the week, that, the points of conflict occur only rarely. We're in church on Sunday morning, all those other businesses and folks are gone, and so there's rarely that conflict between the two groups. We have apartment complexes that are built immediately adjacent to our church, across the church, the midtown development went in, and it has not created the problem that a lot of people might have anticipated. We've been able to share parking to a great extent, when there were more businesses, pre-COVID, when there were more businesses, we actually worked out an arrangement where their employees parked in our church parking lot during the week, and on the weekend, they were fine with us parking in their parking lot. So it will be an adjustment, I'm not pretending it won't be an adjustment, but I think having eight additional parking places on the street that eighty to ninety percent of the time will not be in use on Sunday morning, will give y'all some additional parking. And I do think, as Mr. Camp mentioned, that's too valuable a piece of property to not be developed, if not now, at some point, and probably at some point in the not-too-distant future, so, it probably will be developed, we've all got to wrap our heads around the idea that Starkville is changing and growing. Churches can live in harmony with neighborhoods with a minimal amount of conflict. The events that Alderman Beatty referenced, the football games, those kind of things, are what I consider black swan events. You can't plan enough to have enough parking on those kind of weekends, whether this development happens or not, there's just not enough parking when you dump an extra 30,000 people into the community. But I do think, I do think it's manageable, particularly with second homes, you're not gonna see the influx of cars that we saw at Middleton Marketplace directly across the street from my church, because those are students, and they were here, they're gone during breaks, but they're here and parking for the most part, so, it's manageable. I don't think that unless you want to sell your property, I don't think that Mr. Taber's going to try to take your property, I don't think he can take your property in any way. Our church owns some property that's very, also very desirable, but it's up to us to decide what will happen with that particular property. But I just wanted to say that it can be done, churches and developments can peacefully coexist.
Alderman.
I just want to be clear, we're taking up the exception of how many parking spaces is this out of code?
We were nine out of code.
Nine, nine onsite parking.
But we're not able to count the eight ratting.
So what's the net?
Net one.
One parking space. I would be a lot more concerned if this were students, because I think students would be a lot more of a pain, but I think that grownups, I think condos might be the best use even for the church, you don't want a bar there, you don't want students living there, so I know it upsets the church, but I think a condominium development might be the best thing to put there, given the other choices, and it is going to be developed, so that's not a choice. Okay, so we're talking about a net one parking space.
Anything else, Alderman up? Alderman Carver, did I see your, I'm sorry, I thought I...
I'll tell you, I know, Ms. Lillian, I know y'all got a beautiful piece of property, but I tell you, kind of can agree with that, I would say, I think I've told you this publicly, you know, there's a few developers, I think your quality of work kind of stands before your reputation precedes you. That being said, I have to access, you know, some of these properties sometimes, and y'all the most stringent, really, developers I know about getting on your property, y'all have, you know, y'all have access cards and all of that, you use parking passes, and y'all enforce that, I would highly encourage if this were to pass tonight to continue that practice here, obviously. That was gonna be my, kind of a dumb question off the start, the public parking spaces, I know it's a net one, we're arguing over a net one parking spot, but, you know, if this were to pass tonight, continue to be very stringent on your parking passes, and then even, I don't know what, probably shouldn't be saying this out loud, but I don't know if we could almost encourage y'all or require y'all to, you know, contribute signage to the church or something, to let your tenants know through email or signage or something, that church, you know, parking will never be allowed, obviously, on their property anytime, not even on, and then I would encourage y'all to probably get a copy of this too, this was helpful for me to see the difference, and I probably wouldn't support it if it was solely student housing, just for the difference of the parking. I know on Bell Grove, for example, if you go through there, that's the first one south of Harvey, when you come down there, drive through there this evening and count the cars, it's hardly ever ten to fifteen, twenty percent, so it does make a difference of the type of housing that it is, so, I understand both sides. I don't know, like I said, I wouldn't support it if it were student housing exclusively, so, I yield.
All right, and I will weigh in, just because I feel like I'm obligated to weigh in as well. I know Mr. Taber does an extraordinary job, we've watched your projects go up, so that is not certainly an issue at all. And I do think we are not in a position to, at some point, that property is wanted to develop, it's extremely valuable property, it's well-located. I do think that it will, no matter what goes there, it's gonna inconvenience your parking, you're not gonna be able to park there like you used to, and I just think that's the reality of life, and I realize that, but he is adding eight public parking spaces out front of there that will be available to you, probably, everything except the black swan event, to use Alderman Sistrung's term. So I think there are opportunities there for you to work together, as Alderman Sistrung again said, I do think there is a way for all of that to come together in a positive vein, I think we probably project more problems than are actually going to be the case. So I think the project has a lot of merit, and I do think that something will go there, and I would certainly much prefer that it be a project that the Tabers were involved with knowing upfront with their quality of their project, so I will be on the record for that. Alderman Beatty, I see your hand. No, ma'am, no, ma'am, we're done. Alderman Beatty.
Mayor, I agree, and I think that Mr. Taber will be a beautiful building project, something to be a credit start on, something to enhance it, looks a start on, that's something that's important to us. I hope that the fact that it's a condominium project, it will mean that it will be lower occupancy and the number of demand for parking spaces as you have laid out. I will say to everybody in the room, that what we're doing now in Starkville, we're facing the same problem, issues, Tuscaloosa, Alabama, and Auburn, Alabama, and Gainesville, Florida, and Athens, Georgia faced fifteen, twenty years ago. This, we're growing up now, and this is part of the process of trying to figure out how we can manage the growing up of Starkville into a showing up college town, and do it in such a way that we don't inhibit or, you know, encroach on other people's ability to have a church, and it's gonna be right in the middle where all this stuff's going on. So it's, we feel, we feel the need to do that, we feel the, I mean, it's head is birds to try to do, to do things right here, and make Starkville really, really first-class college town, and not just swallow up everybody at the same time in the process, please know that. So if anybody's gonna build something in Starkville that we know is gonna do it right, Mr. Taber pick out, I mean, that we, I think across the street is, you know, an example of how architecture, how things are not supposed to be built, so, but, with that said, I hope that we can do this, Mr. Taber will do this in such a way as the city, you know, we got codes and we got planning department stuff now, it's gonna, it's gonna hold their feet to fire, make them build it right, and you wouldn't have to anyway, Mr. Taber would build it right, but hopefully, and I know he will be, his project will be a good, will be good neighbors for your church, enhance the value of your property, and so, I hope that'll work out, but that's what we're having, we're going through now what the folks in Athens, Georgia went through twenty years ago, we're growing up, and this is something we knew we were gonna face, it's a good problem in that, but anyway, Mayor, I yield.
All right, thank you. Alderman Brooks, I saw your hand, are you planning on making a motion?
I was, but I just want to add one thing, a couple things, kind of echo what Alderman Beatty had to say, we are growing up, you know, and this is kind of payback to what seems, the tap grant to Russell Street completely changed the look of Russell Street, the one and the other, and now we've created this demand and this desire, and we can almost say it's a lot taken from this property, but, you know, this is, I mean, this is kind of payback to what former boards have done with the tap grants and stuff, and having had opportunity to visit a number of Mr. Taber's properties throughout the years, I would second that thought too, this will be a good project, satisfied with, and we know that we manage our properties extremely diligently, and we do a good job there, so that being said, I may, I move to...
Are you saying approve or...
Yeah, I move to approve it, I want to make sure I get it worded out.
Okay. Mr. Taber, you may go sit down, thank you, I appreciate your standing there.
In the various, I guess we need to get them all in the same motion, correct?
Bundle them all.
Yeah, bundle them all, so, so I move to approve of the request for special exception in the various of his property on Russell Street and Johnica.
All right, thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Alderman Rupp. Any further discussion? All right, seeing all those in favor, please, I tell you what, if you would answer yea or nay, the city could call your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Rupp.
Yea.
Alderman Brooks.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrung.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Nay.
All right, by a vote of five to two, motion carries. Thank you, everyone, we appreciate you being here and giving us your input. All right, next item is a public hearing and consideration for 211911 to determine whether the structure located at 210 West Gillespie is a menace to the public health, safety, and welfare. Give everyone one chance.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board of Aldermen. I'm Officer Alexandra Nash with the Starkville Police Department, and I'm in the specialty of code enforcement, so I am a code enforcement officer. I'm here to present to you 210 West Gillespie as a twenty-nine, or sorry, 211911. So 211911, right here is gonna be the Mississippi Code statute, to determine whether property or parcel of land located within a municipality is in such a state of uncleanness as to be a menace to the public health, safety, and welfare of the community. A governing authority of any municipality shall conduct a hearing on its own motion or upon the receipt of a petition signed by a majority of the residents residing within 400 feet of any property or parcel of land alleged to be in need of the cleaning. Notice shall be provided to the property owner by United States mail two weeks before the date of the hearing, mailed to the address of the subject property and to the address where the aid ballerum tax note for such property is sent by the office charged with collecting ad ballerum tax and posting notice for at least two weeks before the date of the hearing on the property or parcel of land alleged to be in need of cleaning and at the City Hall or another place in the municipality where such notices are posted. This is gonna be an overview of the property, which is 210 West Gillespie Street, Starkville, Mississippi. The parcel ID number, which may be incorrect in your packets, is gonna be 102B-00-321.00.
I'm sorry, did you say that was wrong in our packets? I read it right, it's wrong?
Oh, is it? Okay, it's corrected then.
Make sure that it's accurate, so, thank you.
Okay, right here is gonna be the property link of October Hall County, right here you're gonna see what the owner is, and the owner is gonna be Nellie Mae Clay, you'll see estate, and then underneath that, you're gonna see CO, which means care of, and then that's gonna be Betty Clay. You're gonna see the exact same thing over here, under the property link, public tax information, and it's gonna say the same thing with the care of in the estate of Betty Clay. Unfortunately, Ms. Nellie Clay is gonna be deceased, so Ms. Betty Clay is gonna be in charge of the property. This next slide right here is gonna be a violation notice that was sent to the property owner on Thursday, July 21st, 2022. And you'll see up here where it says Nellie Mae Clay, as well as estate, and this is just gonna be an overview. Oops, I think I skipped. This is gonna be a violation notice and sent to the property as well, on dilapidated structure issued Thursday, September 1st, 2022, and you'll see the same thing on top. Next is gonna be certified mail, which certified mail you can actually track, you'll see the tracking number located here, and you'll see a stamped date of September 2nd, 2022 on that as well. It was sent to Ms. Betty Clay, where she resides at 515 and a half Gillespie Street, as well as the property itself at 210 Gillespie Street. This is just gonna be more of the tracking mail, where we were able to track it through our MyGov system that we put in, as well as the US Postal Service, so you'll see both of those on all four of these, this was on the back of the mail, and then these were the slips that we obtained.
Have we heard from the property owner?
She is present.
She's present, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Let's play.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you're fine. This is gonna be the public notice which was placed on the property, as well as it was placed at Starkville City Hall here. So these are gonna be photographs that were taken Wednesday, 9/21/2022, by myself, posted of the hearing, so this is gonna be the property 210, this is gonna be here at 110 West Main Street, which is gonna be in this window, as well as this is gonna be a closer up view, so you can actually read it. Next, these are gonna be more certified letters, as it was approved that it would go to public hearing, we sent a public hearing notice to both where Ms. Betty Clay lives, as well as the property itself. So these are gonna be original photos that were taken on Friday, 5/27/2022. You'll see, this is the west side of the house, which consists of large holes above and below the window, it's gonna be located right here, as well as right here. The other one's gonna be overview of the west side of the house, which shows waves, if you were to draw a straight line right here, you can kind of see it waving in and out, as well as the structure itself. So this is gonna show the deterioration of the house, just happens over time. So right here, the homeowner was notified of the possibility of Starkville Fire Department using it for training purposes, sometimes they will do that with houses as a controlled fire, it's good training for the firefighters. So we did let Ms. Betty Clay know, and she stated that she would contact them on her own, because she was unable to take care or make any kind of repairs to the house. So these photos were taken Tuesday, 7/12/2022, that show no progress has been made, unfortunately. You'll notice right here, the holes are still gonna be there, you'll notice this over time will start to continue to go down, as well as the wave that is still there. So the owner herself, Ms. Betty Clay, contacted us to inform us that unfortunately, Starkville Fire Department was not gonna be able to use... Fire Department was not going to be able to use this property for training purposes. It was too close to the adjacent property, which they saw if they did do a control fire, it was too close that the fire sparks or something would unfortunately go to the, onto the property. So photos were taken, taken, and the homeowner, Ms. Betty Clay, was informed that the case would be, would go to public hearing and continue as a 211911. So here, photos were taken 9/2, 2022. No changes have been made. The homeowner, Ms. Betty Clay, spoke to code enforcement officers on this date and informed us of attempting to sell the property. So she was hoping to sell the property. Right here, we have the front overview, which is going to be the south side, it's going to be facing south. Right here is going to be the west side of the property. You can see the wave right here. You'll see one of the holes, which goes completely through. This is going to be the back of the house. Not sure if you can see right here, some deterioration, as well as on the edge. And this is going to be the east side of the house, where you can see the roof as well. These photographs were taken by me on Wednesday, 10/5/2022, showing efforts have been made to correct any of the violations. So again, we're going to have an overview of the house, the front of the house, which is the south side, the west side right here, which is the roof is causing to continue to deteriorate. Right here is going to be the back of the house, the north side of the house, and the east side, and again, another overview of the house. And then Ms. Betty Clay is here, I'm not sure if she did want to say anything.
Oh, well, I'll put it as a public hearing, we'll give her that opportunity to do that, that's okay. All right, anything else?
No, ma'am.
Any questions of Officer Nash? Alderman Beatty?
Where's this house located, Gillespie?
210 West Gillespie.
But I mean, I'm trying to get a picture of where the house actually is. It's in the block west of Jack, just west of Jackson. Gillespie starts over.
It's, it's close to Lewisville Street.
It started off in Louisville Street. It must have started off in Louisville.
There's Lewisville, you'll take a right onto Gillespie, and it's a little bit past the railroad track. It's close to Yates, yes ma'am, where the church is.
Near the railroad track.
Yes.
South to north side of the railroad track, north, what side?
South.
South, south. Can I sit back off here?
Faces, faces Gillespie.
Okay.
Anything else? Alderman, do you?
It's my ward.
Okay, all right. All right, I will, if you'll let me, I'll open it as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor or against this particular item? Ms. Betty, Ms. Betty Clay, if you want to come forward now and say anything, you're welcome to do so. Do you want, no, no, okay, all right. So you're, but you're aware of the, okay, all right, thank you. Anyone's wishing to speak for or against? Either for or against? All right, seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing. And any questions, any further questions about this particular piece of property from any of the board members? Alderman Vaughn.
Ms. Clay, come, come forward, please.
Well, what we'll do is we will, we've got a number of things that are in preparation to be demolished by our street department. So that would be, since we can't burn it, that would be part of what we do, and then we will be placing a lien on the property as a part of that process.
Mayor, what's the demolition cost?
Alderman Vaughn's got the floor.
Ms. Clay, did you understand what the mayor said?
Yeah.
That, that, you know, we couldn't, we couldn't burn it because of the location, because the other house right next to it.
That's right.
But we get demolished, and then there'd be a lien to your property on your taxes. Okay, ma'am, that's all I'm trying to make sure you understand.
All right, all right, thank you. Alderman Beatty?
Oh, well, I, question I was going to ask was, do you have any idea what the demolition cost is going to be?
Well, we do it in-house, and it probably not all that much. I'd say maybe four, five thousand dollars. And that, that's just me winging it, just based on the demolitions that we've done. So it would be in, in that neighborhood, we will again do it in-house, along with several other locations that we would.
And when that property's gone, that's, that's, that can only be pretty, probably somebody buying.
It will be, it will be.
And will that lien extend to a future?
Yes, yes, it travels with the property.
Okay, okay.
Anyone else? If not, I need a motion.
Move through.
A motion for approval from Alderman Vaughn, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Sistrung. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries, thank you very much. All right, Mr. Perez, Officer Perez, are you taking the next one? All right, if you would, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board of Aldermen. I'm here today to present 112 Fellowship Street as Mississippi Code in violation 211911. That is to determine whether the property or parcel of land located within a municipality is in such a state of uncleanliness as to, as to be a menace to the public health, safety, and welfare of the community. A governing authority of any municipality shall conduct a hearing on its own motion or upon the receipt of a petition signed by a majority of the residents residing within 400 feet of any property or parcel of land alleged to be in need of cleaning. Notice shall be provided to the property owner, to the property owner, United States mail two weeks before the date of the hearing mailed to the address of the subject property and to the address where the ad valorem tax notice for such property is sent by the office charged with collecting ad valorem tax and posting notice for at least two weeks before the date of a hearing on the property or parcel of land alleged to be in need of cleaning and at City Hall or another place in the municipality where such notices are posted. This overview of the front of the property at 112 Fellowship Street, Starkville, Mississippi, This is going to be the October County tax document showing ownership as Will L. Allen et cetera, and the deed of the property showing the same. This is a calls for service from the police department from a 911 call due to a fire on 6/2 of 2021 at 4:50 in the morning.
It's been in this condition for a little over a year and a few months, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and now Alderman Beatty, this is your ward, I believe?
Ward.
Or was your, I'm sorry, was your ward. Now Alderman Brooks' ward, my apologies.
Fired, fired good at this house.
Yes, it did.
It was total loss.
Yes, yes.
All right, keep going, Officer Perez, I'm sorry.
Now, this is the notice of dilapidated structure sent on September 2nd of 2022. And this is the certified mail sent to the property, the property owner, as the only one listed as that property. This is the public notice for public hearing posted at City Hall and on the property itself, and mailed to the property. This is a photo of it being posted on the property itself and at City Hall on September 21st, 2022. This is photos taken on July 13th, 2022, of the front, east side of the house, north side of the house, and that is the west side of the house.
Have we been in touch with the owner at all?
South side of the house. So.
Has he been, let me, has he been in touch with us?
No, we have gotten no contact from any ownership.
Oh, excuse me, Alderman Beatty? I mean, I also.
Did Mr. Allen still live?
No, uh, 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 can I come over? Oh, sir. Mr. Allen was a friend of mine, and everything died with him. I didn't have anything. He had a couple of people, everything, are, been trying to find out where is the, what does you do? Are, are his, his phone number, 662, or 617, uh, 1478. Barbara Brooks Harris, from what we can understand, is the person that supposedly, she left in charge, but at this point, we need some help on our, with Mr. Allen's past, our, that is, everything died with him. And we would like to know, oh, you can call Mr. Eric, Ms. Barbara Brooks Harris, either myself, and give us some insight on what we, what we should do.
Thank you, Mr. Perez.
Because we have our law.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
So Ms. Barbara had been in contact with us, but due to she could not show any proof of ownership or being deemed the caregiver of the house, or caretaker of the house, that we couldn't help her in, in any way of allowing her to do something with the property. So this is a photo taken December, sorry, October 3rd, 2022, of the front of the house. It has not changed in any way. As the south side of the house, this is the west side of the house, and the north side of the house.
Thank you. Clearly, it is, it is in a state of disrepair, and it looks like a true.
Major, questions? Do you own the property? Air property?
It is, but we, we have to go by what's on the tax records, and that's what we're, you know, that's what we're required to do for 211911. Mr. Latimer, you want to speak to that at all?
I mean, I have to do, so the law requires us to mail notice to the subject address and whoever gets the ad valorem tax notice. So as long as we do those two things, we comply with the statute. That doesn't preclude somebody from saying, I want to rehabilitate the property. That would be up to the city to weigh and consider that. But we don't have an obligation to track down heirs or, or do a title search.
Well, this property is clearly not going to be rehabilitated other than through.
No, it's good, that's all. I wanted, you know, because no record is, you need your cell phone.
Alderman Vaughn. I'm sorry. Beatty, were you finished?
Yeah. Mr. Jones, is that, is that Philip Allen, is she, is she related to Philip Allen?
Uh, uh, she was married to William Allen, he is deceased, and she lived after him, and then she got one of, of, anyhow, and so Eric, Barbara, they are the only ones that want to find out what to do, because they are law, because they have nothing to tell me anything about what they should do. If that, if that makes sense.
So it's the number you gave them is to one of, one of those people?
Yes, Ms. Lawrence, yes.
You spoke with them?
Yes.
What did they say?
Uh, she said that she, they had pulled a permit sometime after the fire, but they never did anything with that permit, they let it last. And they came forward again, saying that they were trying to get rid of a couple of the other cousins and get something back with it, but so far, they haven't done anything.
It's time for us to do something.
That's right. Senator Jones, what's your thing with you, Beatty?
Well, you have time. If you adjudicated as a menace tonight, you have up to two years to do something now. The statute was recently amended. So that doesn't preclude additional communication, but what it would do is make sure the city could act when it's ready to act. So an adjudication would be proper tonight, based on the pictures, and then you could make further decisions down the line.
Well, let me, let me say this. If we adjudicated, well, if we adjudicated tonight, we've got plans to move forward in probably November with the other items, this other house that we just, that we just dealt with, as well as a couple of others, for us to go ahead and demolish those things, because this is not going to be brought up to code in any kind of way without demolishing it in the first place. So, but we will be moving forward with the street department, and we're waiting for them to have a little bit of lull in their work, because obviously, they're still out doing work, but there'll be some times in the, in this fall and in the winter where they'll be available to do that. So that's what we'll move forward with. Alderman Sistrung?
And this is almost a no harm, no foul to the property owner. It's got to be cleaned up, probably can't get it cleaned up any less expensively than having us do it and have it attached to the tax lien, that the estate can then follow up to figure out what their next steps are. But it's, it's got to be cleaned up and.
It's a valuable piece of property in the county district.
It is.
I mean, so there's real opportunity there, and we will, we will attach that lien, and then we'll, the other thing that happens when we attach a lien is we have the opportunity to sell it. So for that, for the bagging that we, we have given them in terms of cleaning it up.
And, and that's what I was going to say, was we've been through a tax cycle since then, and somebody has, has either paid the property taxes, or it's gone to sale for, for property taxes. And so if somebody has paid it, that only gives a pretty good clue who's taking care of what.
Um, Vaughn, do you want?
It's not too far from you, is it?
No, it's a, it's a, it's a perfectly accurate. Go ahead, you, yes, sir. Do you want to make a motion? All right, I have a motion from Alderman Vaughn. Do I have a second?
Second.
I've heard down here, Alderman Carver, all right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Posed? All right, motion carries, thank you very much. We're getting there, guys. Next, we have a claim stalking.
Move through.
I have a motion from Alderman Sistrung, do I have a second? Second from Alderman Rupp. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Nay.
Motion carries, five to two, and that takes us, please tell me that takes us to the end, if I remember correctly.
What's that, what's that?
It does, we're at the end. Okay, so let me, let me read my language calling for a work session. In accordance with a notice that's required under Mississippi Code 254113, board will be having a work session on the 28th of October, 2022, at 11:00 a.m. A second floor conference from the City Hall located at 110 West Main Street. Notice should be provided to the work session within one hour of this meeting. By posting such notice at City Hall, it will be made a part of a minute of the board meeting. The work session will be open publicly, meaning the city of Starkville and the press and public are invited to attend. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move through.
A motion for Alderman Vaughn to adjourn, second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Beatty. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? All right, we are. We are, we are in adjournment.